The public hearing first.
I'd like to call the May 11th, 2015 School Committee meeting to order. At first, we'll open the public hearing on school choice.
Yes, so I put in the packet the current enrollment, well, not the current, but the projected enrollment for next year for the elementary schools and also projected enrollment for our middle schools and high school. School choi-- it's an annual vote that's taken by the, by the school committee. And you can, you can look at school choice different ways. If you have available student slots at certain grade level, you could just focus it on that grade level or at a particular level, like all elementary or all middle or all high school. As you can see from our numbers and the conversations that we've had this year, particularly at the elementary level, we, we at this time do not have the space available for additional student slots anywhere in the district. So even though it's something I know we've talked about in the past, it's not something that I would recommend that the committee vote in favor of for this year, for next year.
So if you do school choice, you have those students for good, correct?
Yes, they, they would remain in the district for as long as they want to stay or until they graduate. That is correct. A district does get, from a financial standpoint, they do get $5,000 for each student that they accept for school choice. It would have to be through a lottery. You'd have to come up with a lottery system in terms of selecting the students. You'd have to advertise. So there's a whole process that you'd need to follow.
Swett.
Thank you.
Actually, can you just read the motion?
Oh, yeah. Sure. Move pursuant to the provisions of GLC 76 and 12B that the School Committee of Reading, following a public hearing hereby withdraws from its obligation to enroll non-resident students in Reading Public Schools during the 2015-2016 school year for the following reason: general district enrollment.
Your second?
Second.
Yes.
So I don't know why, I thought that in order for students to go to another district that was a choice district, like from our district, that we had to be school choice, but that is not true.
No.
So a student, any student can go to a school choice district from their home district.
Correct.
As long as they're accepted in that choice district.
Correct.
And does the $5,000 transfer from our budget, our money, to the other district?
Chapter 70.
So you lose the $5,000?
Through the chapter 70 funding, yep.
But where does that, does that show up in our overall budget? I thought I saw a line item on the town budget somewhere.
It shows up on the town budget.
Yeah.
It shows up on the town budget?
Yeah, there's, I believe there's a couple of students.
As a na-- as a, as sort of a charge down or something? I meant to bring my, I was gonna bring my.
Um, I'd have to look at it on our, end of year report. It shows up on Schedule 1 and on Schedule 19.
And it's basically, ends up being, it's a reduction against chapter 70?
It's the chapter 70, yes.
Okay. And so we have a couple of students.
I believe they're in the virtual, the on, the online virtual academy, which is considered a school choice.
Oh. Homeschooling is choo-- school choice now?
Hmm?
Homeschooling is not a school choice.
No, it is not.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Jewel.
So we, I'm, we only have students virtually, not, have we ever had students from other districts through this program in years past?
No, I don't believe, at least in the five years I've been in this role, no.
And I should know this, but give me, you know, I'm new. This is separate from Metco?
This is separate from Metco, yes.
Totally separate from Metco, okay.
Yes, this is, this vote that you take has nothing to do with the Metco program.
Okay, thank you.
And we currently just, we have 75 Metco students.
How does that affect vocational students that may opt to go elsewhere other than the Northeast Volk?
So the, that's, that's a good question. So our home Volk school is Northeast Volk. If they do not offer a program that a student wants, I have to approve the student to move to another Volk school. Most students that seek that route go to Minuteman.
Right.
So I believe that we have five, yes, okay, five. We have five students that go to Minuteman. That funding actually comes out of the town budget, not the school budget.
What's the cost? Do you know?
The tuition for Minuteman, I believe, is like $16,000, $17,000, which is more than Northeast Volk.
Why wouldn't it be, I guess, wouldn't, doesn't fit under school choice, though?
No.
No.
Let's see.
I, just an opinion, I am not in favor of making us a school choice district because I think we've struggled and focused hard on trying to get our class sizes towards our goals. And it's not necessarily predictable as to who we still are going to have come in. I already know of a family that's moving into the Birch Meadow district that wouldn't necessarily be on our numbers yet. So if we open ourselves to school choice, then we are going to crowd our classrooms potentially again, and I don't think that's a good idea. And I don't think that the money would be a good reason to crowd our classrooms. And we have them ongoing, so I think that, that jeopardizes the numbers going forward.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of it, but that would, it would, really, if we decided to do it, it would only be where we thought there was space.
Yes, you can select, you could select the level.
It wouldn't be like they could say, well, we want to go to the fifth grade where we have over, you know, overpopulated students.
Yeah, it would be, it would be where the school committee decided the spaces would be.
One more question. So, but once we take them in, don't we have to keep them?
Yes.
Yes, so then, you know, you have them for the rest, potentially, if they want to, they can stay.
Of course they want to.
Ready for the vote?
Yes.
All those in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. At this time, we'll have public input. None. Now we'll have the RISE presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting us. Sort of double-edged thank you. This is my favorite thing to do. I'm Debbie Butts. I am the RISE preschool director. This is Erica Boren, who is in her third successful year here. RISE, actually, she took a break. She was a teacher before at the Killam School, right? So thank you, Erica, for being here. And I want to thank the School Committee and Martha and Craig and Dr. Doherty for being so supportive of the RISE preschool. It's been a wonderful experience. I said today at interviews that I think I have the best job in town. Definitely, I have the best case manager's job in town, and so I feel really lucky. So we'll give you a little overview of what we do. This is some artwork. These are community helpers, just so you know. That's a nurse and a dad. So RISE preschool begins the public school experience here in Reading, and we're really proud to introduce families to pre-K to grade 12, positive educational experience. It's about the same as last year. We have 132 students, 42 receiving special education services in classroom, 71 community model students, and 18 receiving related services only, and those are by and large speech and language kids that come in. So this is our staff, pretty much the same as last year. One occupational therapist, 1.4 speech and language pathologist, two part-time physical therapists that we share with other schools. We have five full-time teachers, two part-time music teacher, 14 para educators, one part-time secretary, and me. And I don't know how to get rid of that.
I'm good. I'll get rid of it.
Thank you. So I'm gonna pass this over to Erica about the Massachusetts State frameworks.
Okay. So we follow the Common Core Massachusetts State frameworks. We have, for preschool, the standards are for our older fours and younger five-year-old students. So when we created our standards-based report card, we looked at what our older fours and younger fives needed to do, and so then we kind of worked backwards and said, what do our three fours need to be able to do in their first year of preschool? As Debbie said, we follow the Common Core for reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and language for the ELA portion of our curriculum. In terms of mathematics, we have counting and cardinality, operations and algebraic thinking, as well as measurement, data, and geometry. And we're really laying the foundation skills for our students in Reading at RISE. In terms of our STEM, we're going to be able to, hopefully this summer, do some more work and kind of delve more into developing some curriculum for our science, technology, engineering, and math. And in terms of our social skills, we have our Second Step curriculum, which we've been using for a number of years now. That, this is a series of 26 lessons that really helps to develop students' social skills in terms of what, how they think about their peers, ways to deal with, how to deal with troubling situations, how to problem solve, self-talk, all these things that kind of before, we used to kind of just expect kids to do, and that we actually need to explicitly teach all of our students how to, you know, have these self-help skills. To kind of rewind, last summer, we had the opportunity to do some ELA curriculum work. I think it did kind of our year one curriculum, and we were fortunate enough to be able to purchase some books. We really put a focus on nonfiction for the Common Core, as it is throughout the Common Core, and we have brought that down to preschool. So we were able to get kind of some really fun, like fall books and talk about the life cycle of a pumpkin. This was an abs, an absolute hit for preschoolers, bless you. This year, The Emperor's Egg. So it's nonfiction, but even within the nonfiction, we're able to kind of focus on text features. Research has shown that when students are brought, the attention, their attention is brought to specific text features, like the different size of print on a page, that their awareness of the print goes up by like 200,000 percent, that they're really able to capture that. And this is a great example because it has large-size text, small-size text on the page, and then even as you continue to go through, it alternates. So that we're really trying to build our students' print awareness in preschool. The other thing that's been wonderful about having these books as a resource is that it has allowed us to be able to do small book groups with our kids. So typically in preschool, prior to that, we would have to do, you know, a whole-class read. So now we have the opportunity to do a whole-class read and then to do a second reading with small groups. Or for our kids who need that previewing of vocabulary, we're able to really build that in for them a lot more. So we've been able to purchase a range. So this was The Emperor's Egg. We've got books for like, for dental health. And in doing this ELA work, we were also able to kind of update our units. You know, we, it didn't, before, we didn't really incorporate dental health. We were able to do that. We have new units for construction and for community service this year as well. This is a great, you know, Todd Par, you know, bringing nonfiction into the classroom in a really fun way with lots of bright, vibrant colors, and even for, you know, we have something for June, right, as we're heading there to the beach. Another thing that we were able to do while we were purchasing and looking for these books, this is the book, Listening Lock. And we're able to kind of, there's some automotopia in this book. So even at the preschool level, we're able to kind of develop students' writing skills and build their awareness of the craft. My Fitbit's going off. So be able to do that for our preschoolers, and it's really exciting what we've been able to see, being able to use these as a resource. And our hope is that this summer, that we're able to kind of explore year two somewhere. We have some themes that overlap, but also some different themes like space, that just as an example of what we're gonna work on for this summer.
I hit everything?
You did, great. Don't you wish you had that in preschool? You're such a great writer now, if you had all that stuff. Probably are already a good writer. The big focus in, in the town is this MTSS initiative. And we've really gone by storm here at RISE preschool. It's really what we do, anyway. This is a big matrix that we created last year. We're actually this year gonna simplify it because we've found that it's really, we're duplicating lessons all the time. We do teach systematically behaviors in every setting, but we're fully involved and the lessons have been taught, and we do it every single day. And I've got some great examples. I hope this works.
We're gonna do the RISE preschool song. Ready?
(Singing) At rock, you can't help but respect our things that each other do. Who's everyone in your game? Stay safe when you run and play. Who's good after always tried? Do it's time to say goodbye.
So that's just, those, that's the RISE preschool four big rules, and one of our teachers wrote that song. She's very talented. I have three videos for you to watch, because they really are, they really show exactly what we do when we're three, four, and five.
Eyes are watching, ears are listening, voices quiet, bodies calm. This is how we listen. This is how we listen. At group time, at group time.
All the classes sing this. They're all really good at it. They know all the words, and they actually do everything they're supposed to do. This one, I have to say, I had the tape about 10 times. This is the best we could do. It's not, I really wanted to show you one that was really bad because they don't do anything that they're singing about, but, no, they're like bumping into each other and pushing.
My bodies calm and listening, I'm standing standing tall. My eyes are watching up ahead, I'm fighting in the hall. I always say with a groan, "I'm walking in the hall." I always walk the hall and move, I'm ready for the hall.
Yeah, what a nice job they do lining up. Oh, my word. It's a little embarrassing, but they really can do a good job, and they do for the most part. If I did Mrs. Joyce's class, you would not see them even blink, because they're all so regimented. But we're doing this at every, at every turn of the, in the preschool, working on our social skills and following the rules and raising behavioral expectations, because when we get to high school, we don't want to have any office referrals. We want to handle them all in the classroom. So when kids are, kids are recognized for their good work, and this, there's a wall of recognition down the hall. You're certainly welcome. If you behave really well, you might even get a ticket when you come. But this is the, these are the effort tickets, safety, inclusion, and respect. And when students are recognized for exemplary behavior, sometimes they're given a ticket, and then they can go and put their name and their ticket out in the hallway. And you can see, it's harder, efforts really, it's an easy one to see. The other ones aren't quite as easy. So everybody loves them. I'm gonna pass it over to you. So in terms of predictors of academic success, I had mentioned before in talking about curriculum that we're laying that foundation for our students in Reading at RISE. And according to the National Reading Panel, you know, students really must learn to read by third grade, and that begins with us in terms of being able to build their oral language, the alphabetical code, and the print awareness, as I mentioned in the books that we have now. It's really exciting for us to be able to have those resources to build these things for our students. And all of these literacy components that we're developing, and even in terms of the math, they're all linked to the later learning and to reading, as well as to academic success. So we really want to develop that alphabet awareness, the letters, and the keywords, and the sounds, and it's amazing, you know, what we're able to do, that students are able to have that familiarity with foundations in preschool so that they already have that language and the terminology in terms of being familiar with the letters and the keywords, as well as, you know, the skyline for how we write letters, the skyline, the plain line, the grass line, and the worm line, that they already, they're familiar with those terms already. Great. And we're gonna, in the interest of time, we're gonna fly through these rest, the rest of these pictures, just give you some ideas of what we do with curriculum. This is actually the librarian from the public library, and she came in for Read Across America Day. She did an awesome job. And as I had mentioned earlier, the social skills and play, you know, we're incorporating social skills in everything that we do, in all aspects of the day, not just outside, but in the classroom during choice time, during our center time activities, even during circle time. And again, we're hoping, and we, we like to see, and we do see, through the repetition of our Second Step social, Second Step social-emotional program, that students are able to invite a friend to play, that they're able to trade, that they know the fair ways to play, that we can share, that we can take turns, that we can trade, they know how to wait for a turn. So we're explicitly teaching these skills for our students. Math and social skills. Oh, this is really cute. I'm sorry to make you listen to another one, but...
(Singing) Well, it's the weather. Do you know, do you know, who never sees the sun? Is it painted on? And the sky is just...
This is part of circle. It's, it's part of every day in every classroom where they're doing the weather, but this is in a substantially separate classroom, and this little person never said boo. I mean, he was always really quiet, and just recently, he's become quite verbal and quite animated. So I had to show him to you. We just had Science, Science Today in one of the classrooms. They're doing flowers, and this young man built a flower out of locks, science and technology, engineering. I had to do this one because this is another, one of our nonfiction books. It's one of the most popular books, and you probably can't tell as well here as I can. There's a baby bird here, the baby penguin, and here's the mother penguin, and she's throwing up. And that is, everybody, all of the kids, that's what they remember most from the book, is that that's how the mommy penguin feeds the baby penguin. And you ask any kid in the RISE preschool, they will tell you that, or they will tell you that the daddy penguin sits on the eggs. Those are the things that they remember, the fact, the science facts. So I had to show you that one, because I think it's so good.
SAT question someday.
This was for Mother's Day.
Give mommy flowers.
Oh, I loved that.
Isn't that the cutest? That's Janelle Booton's little girl. She's one of our teachers.
Writing where they let them spell it.
I don't know if you can see who that is.
Dr. Doherty.
I know, it's the only time. He doesn't ever show pictures of himself, so we do it. And then we go to kindergarten. These are three little people that are gonna graduate this year, and they are all going to a program in the fall. They have all made remarkable strides, and they're ready for kindergarten in Birch Meadow.
Wow.
And that's it.
Nice job.
Thank you very much.
I have a question on the, that slide you showed that had effort, respect.
Yes.
Inclusion, and I can't remember what the...
Yeah.
Safety.
Safety. So what would be, I mean, we, as you indicated, effort is something that you see a lot of. What would be an example of when someone got a badge for inclusion or...
Well, maybe when you... So inviting your friend to play. You know, sometimes that, especially in some cases, we have boys that want to play with boys, and the girls want to play with girls, and that, you know, we can't play. Sometimes that, an opportunity to give an inclusion ticket would be, you know what? You invited a friend to play. Or that friend asked if they could join your play, and you said yes, that you included them. That's when, that's how I would look at that one.
What kind of connection do you have with parents that will help them understand what you're trying to do and how? One of my concerns is that our kids sometimes are being encouraged to grow up so fast, and there's a lot of comparison of what Johnny or Jane ought to be able to do now, and so parents, we can get worried about whether we're in the right place or our kids are in the right place. And how do you communicate breathing and giving kids developmental space?
So I actually send home a daily email every day to my families so that they know exactly what we've done. They know the letter that we've covered, the sound, they know the story that we've read, they, they know the center activities that we've done as a way to try to promote that homeschool connection, because preschoolers are very much in the moment, and once they walk out that door, literally by the time I say, "Bye, I'll see you tomorrow," it's gone. It's gone, you know? And so I've had a lot of positive feedback from families, and I've done this for the past couple of years, that they're able to talk with their children and to have these conversations at home and to be able to extend that learning. Certainly in terms of, you know, in terms of children being where they need to be, we have our standards. You know, we do have conference, you know, we have our conference time, and we have our progress reports that we do in January as well as in June, and we really all try to have an open-door policy so that parents are able to, you know, reach out to us if they have questions or concerns at any time. But we're also really lucky, too, at the preschool level, because we pretty much see the parents at drop-off and at pickup. So we're able to have a lot of, you know, kind of on-the-side conversations, and that if there's a concern, we can kind of address it right away. So I feel really lucky that we're able to do that, and certainly, you know, email and where available, and we try, we really communicate to the parents. As a parent, you know, that's really important to me as well, and so I always try to look at how would I want, you know, my children's teachers to be in, to be able to communicate with that. But we also talk about how kids are who they are, and that it's our job to kind of teach them, get them where they are, and to be able to bring them to that, that next level. And by providing families with these daily dose, I call them the daily dose, you know, that they're able to, be able to extend the skills, especially for our students in my classroom, because I have them three, three days a week for two and a half hours. That's not a lot of time. And we're really fortunate in Reading that so many families are so involved and that they want to be able to extend their children's learning at home. But we do make a huge effort to tell people that everybody's different, everybody learns at a different pace, and we do an awful lot of learning through play. To many people, it doesn't look like that you're doing very much, but children are learning tremendous things when they're at play and the social skills that they develop. So we do make a huge effort to try not to compare students and to admit that the Common Core is challenging. Yep. Thank you.
So, very nice job. Very impressive. One question I do have is, many years ago, I actually had, I was the physical education teacher for the RISE preschool, actually had Elaine's Boys. What do they have now for physical education or physical activity?
Well, at the Wood End School, they actually have PE. We have two classrooms over there. Next year, we'll probably have three. They'll actually get PE. At the RISE preschool, at the high school, we do not have that, but we have lots of opportunities to be outside. We have space outside. If we need, we don't have organized games like you do in physical education, but the students do use the lobby out in front of the gym in the winter, and the teachers do organized games, but it is not an area that we have access to as much at the high school.
Yeah, it was a, it was a challenge, actually, teaching it here, because we didn't really have a, a great facility. It was actually done probably in a space similar to what we have right here in between the tables.
That's why we have music now.
So, well, the music frameworks are very similar to the physical education frameworks, so is there movement going on in them, the music classes?
Yep.
The music?
We do.
Who is the music teacher now?
Her name's Sam Prendeville, and she does a wonderful job with our preschoolers.
Okay.
We also try to incorporate a lot of movement during the day to just as part of kids need to be active, that, you know, especially preschoolers, you know, even for me. Take it up, you know, we have, we have our circle time when we're up, you know, three or four times. We're up when we're saying the alphabet, and, you know, I have special sticks where kids, you know, will pick this, you know, pick a particular stick, and, you know, we'll do a visualization exercise, you know, "I want you to close your eyes, pretend that you're at a park, and you're at a baseball field, and you can see the diamond. Okay, now we're going to pretend that we're the pitchers," and then we, you know, pretend that we're pitching as we say the alphabet. You know, we do kind of fun things like that when we're counting, too. So we try to make, you know, the learning active throughout.
Good. Because the research behind it is, is really strong, the benefits of physical activity in terms of, you know, brain development.
Absolutely.
And then one other question, too. Second Step's a great program. I'm very familiar with it, but I know that most of the elementary schools, don't they all use Open Circle?
They use Open Circle.
Open Circle's not available at preschool.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking.
I've called the Stone Center a couple of times. I've offered to be the pilot place if they want to try it out at preschool.
You would think it would be.
They haven't designed it yet.
Yeah, no, Second Step's a great program, but I was just curious if Open Circle did have, so, but great job with Second Step. It's excellent.
Thank you. We love it. We do. We've had a lot of success with it. Yep.
Just as a follow-on, there's other questions, just as a follow-on, I'm just curious, maybe it has to do with the level of, why would Wood End students be getting PE and not over here?
Because they're in an elementary school. It's already set up, and, and Joanne King is a wonderfully inclusive principal and has tried to figure out a way to fit in a half hour for our, our little ones over there. It's just out of the goodness of her heart.
Okay. We, we don't have the staffing to be able to come over here, provide the... Please.[1754.13]
I just wanted to say, I had the good fortune to actually read in Ms. Boren's class, and I had a blast, and I saw this actually in action, where the kids, the music and the activity really helped them focus and transition from one activity to another. It was really very magical, actually. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. See you next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Martha, you ready to go with...
Is it all Martha? I am. No, Craig, I'm not singing.
Modular update and then the budget update.
I do. Yeah, Craig's gonna, Craig's singing now, here's the modular, here's the modular. Barrows Eaton and Killam.
A little modular song.
Yeah, I'm not that creative. No, there's more, okay.
Is it just one?
I think, I think so, yeah. Yeah, there's just one patch. So, what I've just handed out for you, for your review, is the site plans from PAR. So, just to give some perspective on where the modulators are actually going. So, the first one, the first page there is the Barrows Elementary School. And so, as you can see, the modular, the plan for the modular is to go on the hot top in the back of the building. There does need to be a ten-foot variance from the modular to where it slopes down. You can also see kind of the trenching. There's trenching to the school for the electric line and the proposed water line. And then there's trenching that goes along to connect for the sewer. So these were all the designs that were done by PAR to help us determine the most ideal, the optimal location for the units. They're not gonna be gas.
Okay, they're just gonna be electric.
They're gonna be electric. The only one that I think potentially could be gas still is...
Is Barrows.
Is Barrows, because of the proximity to the gas line.
Thank you. I just had a question about the trenching. Can you explain what that will look like ultimately? Or is it underground, or is it...
It's, they're gonna have to dig to submerge the conduits to connect for the electricity.
But then ultimately, it's offline, over.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I just wanted to get that clarified, thanks.
And just to that point, it's a good question, thank you. This all starts, the site work starts right after Memorial Day, which, we have had initial conversations with the building principals, and there are some communications that will happen with parents in the communities as well.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, sorry.
Yep, tomorrow.
So, Martha, weren't any of these lines, when we had the portable there before, weren't those lines already in place? I mean, it's in the relative same area.
No, it's not.
I'm not, I'm not sure any of it's...
Are you talking about for Barrows?
Yeah.
Barrows was in the, where the current staff parking lot is.
Yeah.
Over more.
Yeah. On the other side of the building, actually.
I think for the Eaton one, I do believe that they're tying in where the Eaton one was before.
That is correct, yes. Joshua Eaton, it is, it is an existing...
But I don't wanna rush to Eaton, are there more questions on Barrows?
It's just too, I'm just gonna say, it's too bad that it's taken up so much of the playground. I mean, there's no other real option, but it's just a shame.
That's gonna be my comment, I was just wondering, so now what happens to the outside time and space for the kids for the last month of school, when would be the time that they need it the most?
So, they can still, there's a whole field.
Yeah.
Down below, there's basketball court, there's a tennis court.
Okay, so they still put down there, okay.
Yeah, what, and I didn't know if you were gonna get into this piece or not, but to answer your question, this is an area that's gonna be pretty much fenced off during, from Memorial Day on. And this is the communication that we're gonna be sending out to parents, and each principal is gonna be designing their own plan on, you know, how students are gonna get access to outside. There are some, there are some schools where potentially they may not be using the actual, in Barrows' case, the hot top, in Killam's case, potentially the playground, because with, the modules are going, and Killam are right next to the playground. And Eaton potentially also. But it's four weeks, and if we don't start it before school ends, it's not gonna be finished before school starts, and that's obviously the goal. I was just more commenting that it was, you know, it's gonna be there long-term, you know. I understood that, you know, it's gonna be a little bit of a challenge, obviously, but it's necessary to make it happen before school starts. But, it's just too bad, because that was a pretty good playground for students, and more about the winter than anything else. Because you're right, John, there's all kinds of space there during the good weather, but during the winter, that's the only location. Yeah, it's gonna be a challenge. But it is what it is.
For Eaton, you're gonna go on the front, I guess the back or the front, depending on how you're looking at it, side of the building, closest to the library egress, right? The library's on that side.
It's a library, yep.
Yeah. And to your question earlier, Mr. Robinson, these do trench to where the original hookup was before. And as you can see, one of the conversations that I had with John Feudo for the recreation department was the impact this is gonna have to the parking lot, but also access to that baseball field, which is actively used all summer long. And so, we're gonna look into what opportunities are available to keep a footpath, if you will, depending on how the fencing goes, so that it can still be accessed, so that we won't force these cars for these baseball games into the neighborhood streets. We'll do our best to see what we can accommodate with regard to continuing to have access to the fields from the parking lot. Because I understand from John Feudo that that is the desired parking lot, if your children are playing on that. And I don't know the name of that field.
Joshua Eaton Field.
Oh, is it the Eaton Field?
Yeah.
Oh, so this is the whole park, the whole parking lot is right here.
Is way over here, yeah.
This is somewhere up here.
So, if you look at the, when you're looking at the photo, where the portable buildings go, there's a small set of stairs that go down to the, basically the outfield, to left field of that baseball diamond.
But is the parking, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So is the parking behind just me and still would be open during the... Okay.
The staff parking lot, yes, that will be open. Yes. This is the hot top that's gonna be affected.
And, so you're talking about sort of access, maybe pedestrian access even to the field?
To the far left, between the fence line and where they're gonna be trenching. So there's still some sort of access from there down to the ball fields.
This kind of goes to Ms. Joyce's question. So, if they don't have access to the playground, where, there must be other outdoor space that they can access during the four weeks?
Yeah, there's plenty.
Or is that a plan that's still in the works?
It's a plan that's still in the works. Each school is gonna have to address this differently. It is potentially, I mean, they, it's gonna be limited, because of the access. It's not the field itself, because the field will be there, it's getting to the field.
Yeah.
That's gonna be the issue.
There's a baseball diamond here, and then there's one way down. There's plenty of field space there.
Well, the building, if you're familiar with Eaton, where the proposed site is, is where the funnel ball is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Martha, I don't think, I mean, I don't think this affects the parking at all. It doesn't affect the parking, potentially it could affect the egress, if you will, from the parking lot to the ball field. That's what we're trying to minimize. We're trying to minimize having people have to walk all the way up to Summer Ave and all the way around to get to the ball fields. We'd like to be able to keep...
Which would then encourage them to park on Summer Ave and the side streets rather than the parking lot.
Yes, yes. Sorry if I wasn't clear on that. We're trying to make sure that we can maintain some sort of footpath to the far left here of the construction site, if you will, to allow for parents to continue to park in that parking lot and still have access down below to that field. Because this is, the other project that's gonna be going on in Eaton over the summer is, there's a full roof replacement that's gonna be happening as well. So I think, you know, some further conversations with the rec department about how actively they are gonna use that field might be in order, but there's gonna be a lot going on in Eaton over the summer. Then speaking to that as well, being a Joshua Eaton parent, and I'm sure the principal's gonna come up with a plan, a lot of the children, before and after school, that's how they access the school. They walk through the fields. So that's a, that traffic patent for, you know, children walking will be something that will have to be addressed. And Barrows as well, a lot of children walk in those stairs. So I think that's part of the, each building principal is gonna tailor their communication to address what needs to change over the course of the last four weeks of the school year. And then Killam, the Killam site is at the back of the building, closest to Hable Street. And as Dr. Doherty mentioned, it is located right next to the existing playground structure. So there may be limited access to that structure, but certainly they will still have the ability to access those fields. And my understanding, and I haven't confirmed this, but I believe this to be the case, is the renovation or the improvement for the fields isn't scheduled to start until school closes. I don't believe that they're, they're gonna be regrading the fields, or there's some project that engineering is doing on the fields at Killam. But I believe that that does not start until school closes.
Yeah, so you're just, you're just saying they may not end up having access to the playground equipment, but there's another, there's still swings, there's still another set of playground equipment closer to Hable Street on that side, further down.
Is it still there?
I don't think that's still there.
I don't think that's there anymore, no.
But they have, but they will have access to all of the fields.
The whole field.
And there's a lot of paved area on the other side.
There's a lot of paved area to the other side, yeah.
So there's a lot of other...
What is getting affected at Killam is the basketball court. Because that's essentially where the basketball court is, where the modules go.
I think the other thing is also, it's probably gonna impact access around the building a lot of, you know, that the principals will address those sort of walking paths, in terms of how people come and go around the building to the back to get to the classrooms or whatever. So it's gonna probably impact that, because they might not be able to pass along this side.
Potentially, I don't believe, and Mrs. Giles would know better than I, but I don't believe there's a lot of cutting through on this side. I believe that this whole side of this is the fence line.
It's all fenced in.
Yeah.
Yeah, along the line, but people walk around the building to get to...
Oh.
By the kindergarten. They access and go by the kindergarten to get to the classrooms in the back.
Oh, okay.
And I'm just saying that, so they may have to, for a few weeks, alternate that. But you're saying, so the building principals are, do they, do they have a clear plan of where the fencing is gonna be?
No, we have not had our first construction meeting yet, so once, and once...
Once that happens.
Yeah, they will.
Yeah, so it'll take a little time to make sure they know where that is, and then develop the alternatives.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
This might be a question that doesn't have a really good answer, but with them starting, are they thinking about the noise factor and the dust factor? If it's hot and the windows are open, is there a way to mitigate that? Or, I mean, are they gonna be blasting through pavement while the kids are in school? Or can that happen on weekends, or...
Well, we're not allowed to do construction projects on Sunday in the town of Reading. So, and it can only be done during certain hours during the day, so...
Saturday.
Yeah, on Saturday, and so...
It's something we will bring up at the construction.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You don't wanna pay overtime on Sunday.
Yeah, it's...
No, no.
We have a little bit of flexibility, but I mean, we...
Yeah. The fourth page, seeing no more questions, is a rendition, a current rendition of what it looks like, the fourth and the last page. We have gone with the kind of reddish exterior to try and have them blend in with the brick buildings in terms of visually for the neighborhood. We have gone back to them to talk to them about the size of the windows. Unfortunately, we, their designer was on vacation last week and got back today, so I didn't get an updated schematic. We have been looking at schematics for location of bathrooms and staff bathroom, a cut-through door on the mating wall, and another point of egress, so that there's more than one way to get in and out of them. But we, unfortunately, I checked my email prior to this meeting, and I didn't have the updated one. So, we'll try and provide that to you for the next meeting, I'm sure. But this is an early rendition of what they're going to look like. Excuse me, Martha, will you remind me, how many students in each modular? I think their capacity is about twenty.
Twenty per classroom. Twenty to, yeah, twenty-two max, but I think they'll be about, right now, I think they'll be twenty.
Yes.
So, in terms of the design, you mentioned the windows, the, assume someone from either the contractor or our, the designers, our work with our building inspector, our local code, ensure that the height of the windows off the floors are correct, and there's all, you know, the specifications for window height and size and everything.
Well, Vanguard is an approved modular construction for the state of Massachusetts, so they are aware...
Fully aware and compliant of the Mass codes, which are...
Yes.
So they, they must... I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I was just, it's twenty.
It's twenty students.
So they must get, I mean, when I look at this picture, I think anybody, any town that's looking at this, the first question they're gonna have is the windows. I mean, these look like office trailers, not a classroom. They, I would think they have other windows.
Yeah, this, there's different ways to look at this. Part of it is, we also have to look in from the inside out, because you wanna make sure that teachers have a lot of wall space inside to hang things up, particularly in a kindergarten classroom, and that you have teaching surfaces. So, it's a fine line between ambient light coming in and having teaching surfaces on the inside.
Are there any, I'm sorry, are there any skylights, or, not that open, but light, you know, to use a, basically a rooftop window? I don't know whether those are options or not.
No, but there aren't any in the design, no.
Probably had cost.
Yeah.
I'm also wondering, I'm noticing it's a flat roof, which I know Killam has a flat roof, but we had a lot of snow, so...
A lot of flat roofs.
Yeah, we have a lot of...
College, the high school, Killam, we have a lot of flat roofs in the district.
I know, so is it possible to shovel off of this roof? Is it strong enough, is it...
Again, it will meet all code, so in terms of a snow load, we'll have to determine what it is, and as we do with all of our buildings, if we're concerned about the snow load on the building, then we'll have someone go up and start removing the snow, so...
Do they have, do they have options for slanted roof on these modulators? Or not with them?
Again, this was the design that they submitted to us as part of their bid response that met our financial criteria.
Sorry.
So, there's not, there's some tweaking, certainly, that we'll be able to do, but there's not a lot.
At this point now, if you start adding things, it's gonna cost more money.
Yes.
Something I'd like to learn a little bit more about, but maybe not tonight, maybe just after your first construction meeting, are the safety features of the modulars, so do the doors lock automatically? That may actually get into why the windows are the size they are, that you don't want someone being able to walk by and necessarily see. So just all of the ways that the modulators keep the students and staff safe. I'd like a little bit more information about that. Sure, thanks.
I do know that part of the design is to have it tie into the fire alarm system at the school. And so, one of the things that we're working on is to make it, to tie it in, but also to have it be somewhat independent. So if there's a, if there's a fire alarm in this, that the Barrows Elementary School doesn't have to empty out, just the portable does. And similarly, if there's a fire alarm at Barrows, this might not have to empty out, just the Barrows building does. Obviously, if it's a fire alarm for the district at the beginning of the year, where we have all of our fire drills, each school will have to, or each, you know, classroom, every classroom will have to empty out. But there, to your point, I will get a list, and we'll be able to talk more about that at a later date.
That'd be great, thanks.
But just to give you an example, that's one example of where they're going to be on the same system, but they'll have some independence from each other.
Any other questions? Yes.
Just a comment, I really like the red.
Thank you.
Little red schoolhouse.
There you go.
Thank you, Martha.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you. We'll have more for you at a later meeting.
You wanna do the budget update?
Sure, we can do that next. So, included in your packet is a updated FY15 budget. I thought I brought in my notes, and I did not, so I will speak from memory. It has changed a little bit since last time, since March. We have, you know, more visibility now going into the last, the last weeks of the school year. One of the biggest changes was at Killam Elementary School. We've had a number of teachers who've been on paid leave, maternity leave, but they are extending, and they're gonna transition to an unpaid, so there's some savings. So there are more cost savings that have occurred. Now that we're closer to the end of the year, I feel more comfortable forecasting that that is going to be an actual savings. I don't know if there are any specific questions about the budget update?
Yes, Ms. Perez.
I had a couple. One was on the memo. The memo says it's the budget as of April 30th, and the spreadsheet says... I had a couple. One was on the memo. The memo says it's the budget as of April 30th, and the spreadsheet says March 31st.
Um, oh dear.
That's totally fine.
This is not the right spreadsheet. I'm not sure how that happened. Because the numbers on the memo don't agree to the spreadsheet.
So the memo is correct, but the spreadsheet was the last month's.
The memo is correct.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is March 31st spreadsheet.
Oh, and it's April 2nd.
Yeah. I apologize for that. If you want to take a five-minute break, I can print out the right one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Continue on to the other things.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Can I ask a question?
I'm not sure how that happened.
Yes.
Dr. Doherty, I'm just wondering, when will we have an opportunity to see the auditor's report? We were audited, correct? We recently audited.
I could, I could maybe speak to that. Is that okay?
Yes.
Um, the audit committee, which I'm, and you are as well, right, Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson and I are the school committee representatives to the audit committee, and we meet on Wednesday evening.
Oh, okay.
So I'm thinking we're going to get the audit report at that meeting.
I think you're getting a report on Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
And then I always, we always come back and report back.
Okay.
You're talking about the town audit report?
Um.
It was a town audit report that was done.
Right, but we were audited ourselves, right?
No, it was a town, they looked at, I believe the focus was on all of the revolving accounts.
Right, right, that's what I was talking about.
That was the town and the schools, it wasn't just, it wasn't just the schools.
Yeah, so that was what I was referring to, was looking at the revolving account audit.
Yeah, the meeting, and that's the, I forget, the audit committee, but the town accountant is there, there's a member of the Board of Selectmen, FinCom, Chuck and I represent the school committee, so we'll all go and go through the management letter and the audit and the report back.
Yeah, I didn't realize that, okay.
And that'll most likely happen next Monday night.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, what will happen next Monday night?
The
Report.
Report back.
Oh, yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Friends and Family Day is still on there, I was hoping it would fall off my agenda, but.
I thought God was taking care of that myself.
I will say, I was curious as I was going through it, I thought, well, what have you done in the past? And like, do people in the community come up and have questions?
It's really a meet and greet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have a tent, um, there's actually several tents at the setup. We're usually next to the Board of Selectmen, and, um, people come by and they ask questions and
Wasn't there a superintendent's dunking tank one year?
That was the fall street there.
So I was thinking, uh, with, uh, is it possible to get, uh, the architect, or whoever, was it the architects?
To do
Some whiteboards with this stuff that we can
Yeah, we could, um
Show.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, not, not too detailed, but sort of a block diagram type.
We actually may know, well, we will know the, well, it will matter at that point, but, well, school, school won't be, I'm just thinking
School, uh, that will, school will still be in session.
But they'll obviously know the, uh, travel routes at that point
Yeah.
For safety.
We need a couple more, we need three more. Oh, never mind.
All right, we'll table that, go back to it.
Yeah, so the, the big thing that has to happen is you just have to come up with shifts, on who's going to be in shift. I think it goes from eleven to three.
Yep.
So, there's not a lot of setup, so it would be hour and a half shifts.
And we can go to Caruso's Garage to get the tent?
Yeah, exactly.
I thought you were going to say to get something else.
So Linda, can you just send out an email with the sign up and, thank you.
I, I'm just wondering, when I was thinking about this, I was trying to think of what might facilitate parents being able to ask questions while they're visiting Friends and Family Days with their little ones, and thinking that maybe we could have a couple of, something for the children to do while their parents are talking with the school committee members. And, um, you know, it could be anything from coloring the new modulars to, um,
Assistant Superintendent doing magic tricks?
A big mural or, excuse me?
Assistant Superintendent doing magic tricks?
Oh, yeah.
Do magic tricks?
He does them all the time, right?
Wait, we could get some cool planes from his wife.
Or some little games, um, that could be thought about.
Any one?
No, I, I think it's a nice idea, I'm, you know, I, I, do you maybe get a high school student or someone to volunteer to do some face painting, but then will that create a longer line for, than we want?
There is, there is another booth that's, our class, I believe, does face painting.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Yeah. And they're probably close by, they're usually sort of close.
No, no, they're usually further than that.
Where is this, this on the field?
Well, we, go ahead.
Are there rules about things like, like if we were to have a watermelon, or something that would bring kid, people
A what?
Watermelon, something that's non-allergic, or are there rules around food, or?
No way. I'm sorry, I, I think that it's so complex with the Board of Health, I don't think we should engage in food. I'm sorry. I mean, I, I think it's a great idea, but it's just
There's a lot more to it than that.
Yeah, yeah. I think the idea of having an act, some little, little activity for the kids to do, which maybe coloring something is good when they're talking, or
Might I suggest a package of construction papers and a big box of crayons? It can be that simple.
Right.
Kids will
They can fold it, cut it, color it, or rip it, make a paper plate out.
Be careful with scissors, no.
Maybe some clipboards.
Exactly.
Make sure that it rubbed it.
No scissors.
There you go.
Do you want me to take care of that?
Oh, you, I can work on
Just kidding.
Linda's in charge of it.
Well, it's a school committee tent, right, so
Right, oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I'm glad to take care of that, if that's
Okay, it's great.
That'll be great.
You're in charge.
So, um, I'm not sure
There was a short commercial break.
Okay.
So actually, Martha, you were out with, one of the things we talked about having is maybe a, you know, a whiteboard with these blown up, so people can see them and ask. We did that, we've done that in the past with other things.
Sure, for here or at each school?
No.
No, no, for Friends and Family.
For Friends and Family, oh, okay, sorry, thank you, okay.
So it's something that the, in the past, the architects have done that, so it's something to ask.
But actually, you know, to that point, you should, or maybe not you, but the architect or somebody, when, once we're done with those, we should have them in the lobby of this, of the, in those schools, so that
Two boards with one stick.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Get three separate boards for us and then they'll be able
That's why he's the chairman.
Exactly.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Okay. Um.
Sure.
Okay, so, um, you have in front of you now the corrected, um, forecast as of April 30th, 2015. Um, as I mentioned earlier, not a lot has changed in the regular ed forecast. It's a little more favorable than it was back on March. Back in March, it was estimated to be up fifty-two thousand favorable, now it's at seventy-one thousand, and the big, the big driver in that change was, um, was some unpaid leave of absences for some of our teachers that are extending their maternity leave to be unpaid. At the very top, the administrative health services is still being forecasted in a deficit. That's still the result of, um, a number of, a number of leaves of the staff that we've had to cover with substitute nurses. Extracurricular athletics are both still pretty consistent. The hundred and sixty-nine thousand, that's what I referred to in the memo, and that was part of the discussion that the, the update was going to lead into the discussion about recommending a school committee to authorize a transfer. We would like to, um, upgrade our infrastructure, um, to purchase a number of arrays for middle school and high school, to increase the, to upgrade the Wi-Fi capacity in those buildings. This is something, I recently learned that, that your Wi-Fi is something that should get upgraded every, and I think it's been seven years since the last time we've done an upgrade.
It's, uh, I believe these are now entering eight years old, a lot of these arrays, so yes.
I think of it back to when I had a modem to connect to the internet, and, you know, seven years later, you wouldn't still connect with a modem, so I think that these, the technology has improved.
So
And we have a number of pockets of where there's no Wi-Fi in the buildings, or
So a couple of things have happened over the last eight years. One is there's been an enormous influx of devices, not, not just school department, but with BYOD. And one of the things I didn't realize is that every time a student brings in a phone or something like that, that's accessing the wireless through BYOD, it stays on. So that increases your capacity load of the arrays, and when your arrays don't have that, both the, the capacity and the latest technology, then what happens is you start getting dead spots in the classrooms. And so we have had some difficulty with that this year, and we've drilled down, we've brought in Zeris, who's the manufacturer, take a look at the problem, and that really is what it is, you've got, you've got wireless access points that are now aging out, um, and you've got an increase in devices. So what this will do is, it will, it will restructure all of the wireless infrastructure at the two middle schools and the high school, and it will build in capacity for future increase. So if we've got a teacher that is using technology, and I think of always Kerry Gallagher, if you've got a, a classroom that's using a lot of technology at one time, there is capacity to add more radios, which is the smaller pieces of the arrays, into that classroom to increase the amount of devices that can be used. So that, this, this allows us to increase capacity down the road as well.
Yes, this is one.
Okay, so you're saying that we were replacing certain piece of it, the array, the arrays, which are like maybe a hub, sort of
Yeah, it's, I'm not sure if they don't have any in here, but
And then, and then, but that's also
They look like big spaces.
Sossers, yeah.
Sossers, spaces.
But that's also going to allow for then even sort of additional leveraging by adding sort of these radios or smaller
Future radio expand, yeah, future expansion.
So they're sort of like repeaters and
Yeah, and each radio is a, is a different frequency that you can access the wireless.
Okay, I know it's from my own son, I don't know what Chuck's heard from his high schoolers or Linda's heard, but I know that the dead spots are definitely a problem, and the kids go out in the hall and they get their connection, and then they come back in and hoping that, you know, they can still
And part of that is because they're now physically located in the hallways, these are now going to put individual arrays in every classroom as well. So that, that's another reason why we want to do this.
Ms. Burrows?
So is it fair to say that this is an expense we should expect every five, six, seven, eight years?
Um, probably closer more to seven, eight years.
Seven or eight years.
Seven, eight years, yeah.
So would this fall under the long-term budgeting plan of having technology replenishment?
Yeah, uh, yes.
Have to be sort of
Yeah, it's not, it's under district-wide technology, which is more infrastructure versus regular day, which is more
Classroom.
The classroom instructional technology, so that's the difference.
Actually, I was going to point that out to you all, that that's why it's in technologies, because it is considered an investment in infrastructure, which as far as DESI concerns as a technology, what the, the technology that we report in regular day is, is classroom computers, teacher computers that are used to, for instruction purposes.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms.
So what, were you trying to go to the point though that it would have been, is this part of like more capital planning? Like this, that expense should be in somewhere, somewhere else, or?
My, my point is the broader point of the importance of budgeting for, um, long-term technology replenishment. This seems like something that now we need to deal with it, but we do know that this is going to come up again in the next eight years.
Right, right.
So, yeah, having a, sort of a, you're exactly right, a capital plan specifically for technology is a great idea, and having that ongoing, the dream of having the ongoing budget support to every year be upgrading technology, so that planning for it and you're paying for it as you go.
Right, well, so that we're not getting into where we are right now with it, where we are, you know, we're really hampering the ability for the teachers and students to access the learning modes.
Absolutely. I do know that there have been some ongoing conversations about technology and the need for upgrade with the town as well, that should there be, should this be part of the capital plan, or should there be a technology capital plan for not just the school, but for the town as well, because I think they're dealing with some aging infrastructure on their side. So
So, sorry, does that, what is, we're taking a hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of the special education? So where does that leave that, and why is that that much higher?
Um, we've had a number of students that either have not gone out of district that we thought were going to go out of the district, or, um, we haven't settled with families on a number of cases, and at this point in the school year, it doesn't look like we will before the end of the fiscal year. This still leaves room for us to prepay a number of tuitions. We've also had, um, a few turnovers in the special ed department where we haven't filled the position, and we've used either, I don't want to say consultant, because it's not consulting, we've filled the gap with either substitutes or outsourcing, like some of the testing. We used, for lack of a better word, a consultant to do some of the, the testing. So there have been some other savings that have happened in the special ed that allow for this, um, this budget transfer.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize the transfer of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars from the special education cost center to the technology cost center.
Just for a second. Do you have the discussion?
I think it's a good expenditure.
All those in favor? Six, zero. Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
So, I guess the, we finished our discussion on Friends and Family Day for this, at this point, we should probably have it up, you know, we'll have an updated discussion. It's still away, what's it, about a month away now?
Yes, we figured we'd do this tonight, the same with the RCTV, so
Yeah.
It was kind of the same theme, so
Okay, so we can talk about the RCTV Community Night now. Uh, this is, uh, Chris had signed this, us up for this.
Don't look at me, this one isn't me.
Oh, I'm kidding, but this is, as I understand it, kind of, it's a, I call it a five-minute infomercial on, on the school department and, and all other organizations, anybody that signs up, and, you know, I think that, and I talked to Jean about it today, I think that, you know, that we should utilize that five minutes to, uh, you know, talk about what we do, you know, budget, budget, uh, policymaking, hiring superintendent, those, what, I mean, I, so I opened that up for this, if anyone else has any other thoughts on that. Anything else?
Contract, we do the, I mean, contract negotiations.
Yes.
It might be good to talk about open meeting rules, so that people understand better that we are meeting here and we are not meeting elsewhere when we're not on camera unless it's executive session.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Yes.
Speaking of which, do we need to post that for Wednesday night if we'll all be in the same place?
No, no, we don't, fir-, well, first of all, it's only five minutes. So I, I remember when you, uh, were a candidate and you had to give your candidate's statement, and you read the teleprompter would be a sim, I assume a similar format to that.
That's my understanding, yes.
So, uh, you know, with the permission of the committee, I asked if Jean could, could do that for us.
Sounds great.
Yeah, you would only, you would have to, well, you can't post now anyway.
I thought it.
Yeah. This is the first in here.
And no, if someone else want, if someone else wants to join her
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to have four people post.
That's fine, but, but not the whole committee.
I thought it was all of us.
No. Uh, so if someone else wants to, to join her, uh, the, to, you know, to give, uh, different sections of the, of the five minutes, only five minutes, so, uh.
I think that's a great idea, Chuck, if whoever would like to represent, and then you could each kind of take your own, you know, piece of the puzzle.
I thi, but I, I think it has to be written by, I think we should be cognizant of it, so I don't know if Jean was ending up, if these are the ideas, and then someone's just going to write, you know, one or two sentences about each of these. I think it's important that we all, you know, that it's, that's solid, and if more than one committee member shows up, then maybe you just want to split up sort of, you know, reading that, or, you know, talking to those pieces, but it's very easy and casual conversation to go way beyond that, so those, it's important, I think, to probably have it mostly written down.
Yes.
I'll, I can caucus with Jean on those topics, and, but, you know, if any, is anyone else, I, I can I cannot be there, so.
Ethan, can I?
Yeah.
I'll be away.
And I can be there. You know, if you, if you need a second person, I could definitely be there.
The only other topics I can think of is that we do have, we do have student representation on it, so we do have a connection to the schools and what's going on, and that, you know, from time to time, there are presentations from our administrators and our talented teacher staff, that's a way to connect with each school.
Right, I think that's important, that we, we're setting policy, but one of the things that's really important to us in setting policy is getting those, the presentations on different programs, curriculum aspects, you know, new ideas. We get some of the, we approve all the important, we approve all the field trips that the district does, which that gives, you know, that is one way that we get to hear about, you know, what kinds of things are going on in, throughout the entire district. So, may it sound like a small thing, we also get to be part of graduation, which is the culmination of something that starts at RISE and ends at RMHS Graduation Day for our students. So, you know, I think those are, that's probably the singular most exciting event for a school committee member.
I think I'd also add just information about public input at the start of every meeting and office hours. So the, the sort of institutional opportunities for anyone in the community who wants to speak to the school committee, there are opportunities for that, I'll jot that down as well.
Oh, Gary's had his hand raised, sorry.
Just gonna add that Julie and I just went through the school committee training, and actually there's some really good blurbs, and you probably have that book, so I'd recommend going through that, there's some, pretty much, everything you've said is pretty much laid out in that, in that binder. And then one other question, when is graduation?
June, um...
Seventh.
Seven.
June seventh.
All right, you, you and I will caucus.
Absolutely.
Sunday, June seventh.
Sunday.
One o'clock.
Ms. Borowski just mentioned the invitation for input, for community input. It's important, I think, to mention too, that when the input comes, the answer might not be that same day, because the intent is to really make sure the answer is appropriate and committee-owned accurate, so that the answers to questions won't necessarily come to the same, come the same day, but they will come.
Might I suggest, I know you're doing all the writing and the working, but maybe if you had kind of a working draft that you could then share with us?
No, we, that's a violation of the meeting law.
That would be a deliberation.
Yeah. Okay. So, all right, thank you.
Just one more thing, I mean, along the lines of communications, I think the website, letting, making sure that people know, you know, what information at the website. I actually recently got a question from someone at the Collin Center at a dance performance about how do they find out where to get information about the school committee? And I just basically said, well, you know, you can, you can come to office hours, you can public, I, so just sort of laying those things out so that people know, and the person didn't, wasn't aware that we had a website, or that we had all kinds of our meeting minutes and information, and, oh.
Yes.
I remembered what I wanted to say. The other thing is the access that once the meeting, that the meetings are televised, and also that they can access them on YouTube anytime that they want to, even if it's not during that, during meeting time. If they wanna follow up, wanna see what's been asked or what's been said, that it is at their, at their fingertips.
And our, our web, or, excuse me, our email addresses are now on the town website.
Yes, they, well, like, I haven't gone and looked, but we've gave, I gave the town manager the information.
I got an email from a resident suggesting that because they didn't have students in the school system, they didn't know to go to Edline, so we have them on the town website now, on our, or we're going to, I should say, on the school committee webpage. Yes?
Does the town webpage have a link? Doesn't, I know, like, for Rakasa, you have the link.
It does have a link.
To the, to the schools, to the Edline page, oh, okay.
It does.
Anything else on that? Yes.
I have a question. And I'm thinking actually about Town Day as well as this. Would it be helpful, I hesitate to say this, because I suspect, it's just awkward to say that, but we're all, Reading residents, we're all around, would it be helpful to have our pictures with our, our emails, so that people know who they're talking to? To sort of bring it down to a more, in, we're formal, but we're also just to engage, so we don't seem so separate, just to enable people to communicate with us easier.
Where, where would you post the pictures?
So actually, I was thinking Town Day, if at our booth we had our pictures with our name and email, because only some of us are going to be there at a time if we're on shifts. And then, I don't know if we wanna do it on the website or not.
I don't think you can do it on the website, unless on the page you actually have a picture of all of you instead of the little red schoolhouse that's there now.
Just a...
So you could have a picture of all of you, and actually, I think we have a picture of all of you with the Rakasa check, but we could have a picture of all of you and then have the caption.
Julie.
Oh, Julie, that's right, Julie wasn't there, so you have to, you would have to do Photoshop or anything.
You'll put my name under the carousel.
Photoshop.
Photoshop carousel out.
But we, we don't have, we don't, we don't have the ability on Edline to have your picture next to the email address.
That's okay, too.
They don't do that for staff, do they? It's not for...
What's that?
That's not done for the staff, I don't think, is it? I've, I've never seen that on Edline.
What?
Pictures with the emails.
No, I don't think you can.
We can talk about that off. So now we have some donations, or award of a contract.
Yeah. So this is the, the recommendation for the award for the contract for the Eaton Roof Replacement, and the associated work is the masonry work and some repair work that's gonna be done at the Parker Middle School. So what we, when we started this process, we have two capital lines in the FY15 capital budget. One was for the Eaton Roof Replacement, the other one was for the Parker Roof Replacement over the multipurpose room. And when we went out to bid for the design services, which this committee awarded to Gail, a little more than a month, back in the month of February was when we awarded the contract to Gail, through our subsequent conversations with them, talking with them about what we were going to be doing at Parker, it became apparent to us that combining the two would save us some, some money, and, and it would potentially help us get a better bid, because you're building up the project. And so the masonry work that was at Eaton wouldn't necessarily be attractive to a bidder, but now if you combine it with the work at Parker, it is. And so the results that you're seeing on the memo from Gail are the, the bidders that were responsive and responsible. So responsive means that they did all the paperwork correctly, they provided their, their bid bonds, all the other certifications that they have to provide us, their D-CAM certifications, that paperwork was provided. And then responsible means they are a good vendor, that their references checked out and that sort of thing, so. By law, we have to go with the lowest bidder, who is deemed responsive and responsible. And in this case, it is reliable roofing, and Gail has done a number of projects with them, and they, they do, they are reliable. So, so we look forward to, to working with them at Eaton and, and at Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, move to authorize the superintendent to enter into contract with reliable roofing and sheet metal for the Joshua Eaton Roof Replacement and associated work.
For a second.
Second.
Martha, do we have a, do we have a contractor on, under retainer, a roofing contractor under retainer that fixes like we have for plumbing and...
We do, so we have a number of those.
Who is that?
For the roofing, I believe it's Specialized Roofing is who we have. That's for minor roof repairs, not for, for like a capital project like this, we would go out to bid. We also have NGS Masonry on, on contract for minor masonry repair projects, but something like this would go out in a, in a bid.
So special, or they didn't even bid?
Um, they did not.
Probably didn't, they might not do that.
Oh, you're not that, they're not that big.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I do have just a, by law, we have to go with the lowest bidder. I'm, I'm sorry, is that town law, state law?
State law.
Okay.
Mass General Law 149.
Okay, the reason why, I just, because I know you said they're reliable, but one of the things that struck me when I was reading through this earlier today was, in general, their reference checks were favorable. So am I just reading that?
No, I, I think where, where there were some hiccups for them, if you will, is, is paperwork, and all contractors are notoriously not the best at keeping paperwork. That's part of the role that Gail is gonna provide for us, is some contracts, some, some oversight management, that's part of the agreement we have with Gail, so I fully expect them to, to stay on top of that for us.
And all other questions? All those in favor of the motion? Six, zero. And we have some donations. Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to accept the donation from the Friends of Reading Rockets Hockey in the amount of $500 to be used to support a coaching assistant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Six, zero.
Mr. Chair, move to accept the donation from Reading Lacrosse in the amount of $4,500 to be used to support coaching assistance for the 2015 season.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Six, zero.
Mr. Chair, move to accept the donation from the Reading P-S-S-T, Parent Supporting Student Theater, in the amount of $1,300 to be used to support the Playwriting Instructor as part of the RMHS Drama Program.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, I just wanted to say about all of them, I figured I'd combine it, just a thank you to the parents that raised the money for these donations, and then enabled the schools to offer us the quality programs that we can, with the assistance that we couldn't otherwise, and the, the Playwriting Instructor that offers a whole nother outlet and genre for our kids to study, and without the parents and the volunteers, we couldn't do that. So I just wanted to say a bulk thank you.
Thank you.
An acknowledgement of that.
All those in favor of the motion? Six, zero. Now we'll do reports. Mr. Gillies.
So the high school seniors have seven days of school left, so the case of senior is skyrocketed. Last week, they, they were all rollerblading before school, and then all the teachers had to really yell out to get their rollerblades off before first period. They had like a lightsaber fight. Nothing destructive towards like learning or anything, so it's all been good. The lacrosse team is still undefeated, so that's great for them. Tomorrow at 6:30 in the PAC, I believe they'll be inducting kids into the NHS Ascentry Club and recipients of a book award, so that's just something happening at Reading right now.
Great. Good job. The committee reports. Stockton.
I have a couple. This Thursday will also be the Spring Into Song Concert by the Choral Department. At seven o'clock, it's free.
As you came to pay, Julie.
At the Performing Arts Center. And this Friday will be a celebration of the 30th, I think it's the 30th anniversary of Understanding Disabilities.
Yes.
And you can check out their website for that, it's very exciting. I wanted to mention how wonderful the Reading Education Foundation Imagination Celebration was last Saturday night. It was really inspiring. They're creative even in their celebrations, and they're continuing to raise money for our schools, which enable teachers to do things otherwise not possible, including having a 3D printer that was on display at that meeting, I mean, at that event, which was really incredible, and the investment of the teachers that researched it and applied for it, and then followed through despite hiccups in making it work for their programs and their kids. And then an update on the Human Relations Advisory Committee, we just met last Thursday, and we've turned our discussions to the sunset clause that's written in, so as of June, I think it's 30th, a number of committees will sunset unless we are reapproved by, or reinstated by the selectmen. And so we have actually a draft done, but we are submitting a request to the selectmen to reapprove our committee for another period of time. And in the process, we are going to raise our efforts to solicit other people who want to volunteer with our committee, whether they want to be a sworn-in member, or they'd like to be an associate member. Town meeting just approved a way that associate members can sometimes be included in discussion and voting if a member is not there, so that eases the quorum restrictions, so that we can keep the momentum of our work going. And we're also in the future going to be discussing the pros and cons of whether we should stay a public committee, or whether we should go private. So anybody with expertise related to that is welcome to come to our meetings, they're open meetings, they're the first Thursday of every month at seven o'clock now, not 7:30, seven o'clock at the police station unless otherwise posted. Thank you.
So what would, sorry, I've asked a question.
No.
What would be the advantage going private versus public?
We're discussing those pros and cons, so being a public committee right now, we have open meeting laws, and one part of our mission is for people to feel comfortable to come to us with concerns, and so if you are in an open meeting and people come forward with concerns, and we have a police, the deputy chief is a member of our police, he's also a mandated reporter, so sometimes that could be a conflict of interest if someone just wants to come to share a concern they have and aren't quite sure how they wanna deal with it yet, or how to triage it, so that's a complication. One of the, of the open meeting law, and one of the complications of going private is that right now, as a part of the town, we are fortunate to have use of the schools for the Martin Luther King Day event, our meetings every month. We would need to establish 501(c)(3) status, we would need to become a fundraising body. The benefits of either way are that we really want to bridge with other organizations in the community, so we have to need, we have to figure out how to do that, what the best way is. We were approached by a group from the UU Church, Race Matters, and we're very excited that we were approached by another group from the town, and we really are looking to collaborate and broaden our, our reach. We also were approached by the library to do a Frederick Douglass event, which we are planning to do, we're just figuring out how, when, where, and that's all what we want to start, but we're not quite sure how to weigh the challenges to either private or public. Right now, we're an advisory committee to the selectmen, so we are public. The Winchester Multicultural Network is a private organization, and I have a meeting with their chair, they're actually, their director, who is a hired director fundraising. So we just need to educate ourselves and welcome any input from people that might have experience with this.
Thank you. Yes.
I just wanna add, thanks to, special thanks to John and his staff and teachers for attending. Not only were teachers there to show their grants in action, but there was a whole lot of the staff there attending, partaking in the event, and it was great to be able to interact with a lot of the teachers, some teachers I don't get to see too often anymore, and so, but a great, really turnout from the district and the district staff, so, thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, and just on that note, a reminder about the, the opportunity to do teacher tributes through RAF and...
Sorry, and just on that note, a reminder about the, the opportunity to do teacher tributes through RAF and our PTOs, if there's a teacher you'd like to acknowledge, then you can do that through the RAF website.
One more thing, I, I, I attended the high school session, the forum.
The forum, yes.
Which I just wanna say, I thought that, first of all, it was PTO meeting, they did a very nice acknowledgement of Mrs. Scarpito, and so that was a nice piece of it, and that Adam did a really great job, I thought, I haven't been to many of the PTO meetings, a great job sort of, you know, opening up that meeting and talking about sort of directions for the high school, and what they're gonna focus on, sort of, you know, over the summer, and and get parents involved, and I thought that that was extremely well received, and then John presented the four questions, and had a lot of dialogue, there were several teachers that were in attendance to just, I think, observe the dialogue, and so I'm sure there was a lot of good input, and you've probably had a couple of other sessions since then already.
No, we haven't.
Not yet, okay.
One, no, we don't have any this week, yeah, next week, we are concurrently running staff sessions as well.
Oh, great.
So we have, we have had a staff session.
So I think, Linda, you were there, too?
Yeah.
It was pretty well attended.
Yep.
But it was, whether, it was very one-sided gender-wise, there was mostly mothers, mostly, yeah, female parents. So it was, but I, it was, you know, well-attended, I think there was about twenty, was there about twenty or twenty-five people there?
Yeah, I would say it was more than that.
All right, it was big, it was a lot, it was good.
It was really nice to take heart in it, too, because it was a good mix of positive and constructive feedback. It felt really good to feel like people felt comfortable being honest in their feedback, and, and there was there was both positive and constructive suggestions, which I think was really helpful. I enjoyed hearing it and participating in it.
Thank you, the other reports? We have minute, oh, I'm sorry.
I do not have any report this evening.
I'm good.
We have minutes?
Do, move to approve the open session minutes dated April twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen.
For a second?
Second.
Comments on the minutes?
I missed meeting.
All those in favor? Six, zero. We have a motion to enter into executive session.
And not to return. Mr. Chair, move to enter into the executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and approval of minutes and not to return to open session.
This is a roll call vote, Mr. Nyant?
Yes.
Ms. Joyce? Sporowski?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson, yes?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb, yes.
Thanks, Carl.